With that in mind, there are a lot of people in the the last few weeks and the following weeks that will be celebrating. And I wish them all well, and it's a really beautiful time of the year. And happy winter solstice as well on Saturday, so.
Yay.
Yay, um, okay, let's.
Longer.
Oh, go ahead.
Days are getting longer.
Yeah, totally. Um, let's see. Do we have any citizens appearing before council? These are for items not on the agenda this evening? If you are here for that, please raise your hand. I see none, so I will bring it back to council. Um, I'm going to bring it back to council and look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Don't move. No, second.
Okay, so I heard a motion by councillor Zelinski, a second by councillor Schacter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, um, let me get on to the next one. Let's see here. Okay. Which one am I?
I, uh, Madam Mayor, I believe we're on item six, which is ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-four, um, twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm having a hard time discerning where the consent agenda stopped and the actual meeting this evening started, so thank you.
Uh, anyway, uh, which is amending, you know, as, as you know, we have a no camping zone in kind of the core downtown of Glenwood and then, um, the kind of trail and tunnel over underneath the, um, eighty-two exit off of I seventy. Um, as you, again, as you know, we have two new kind of tunnels in town, pedestrian accessways, uh, across Highway eighty-two at Twenty-seventh Street and then actually under Twenty-seventh Street. This is first reading ordinance to include those in that no camping area within the community. We're seeing some safety issues on getting people back and forth through those pedestrian accessways and bicyclists. Um, so this is expanding that map and the map will be attached on second reading. I apologize, we're working with GIS to get that finalized. Uh, but we do have a kind of a verbal description in the ordinance of the area. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I wouldn't, I would note that, um, RAFDA has, uh, requested that we undertake this as well. Um, from our standpoint, um, we will probably see a fa- uh, final IGA with them and C dot regarding the tunnel under eighty-two uh, into January, but we wanted to get this queued up now, um, so that it can get a second reading on the second of January and then, uh, be effective ten days after that, so.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you for that clarity on the RAFDA, you know, that this would normally fall in your jurisdiction, however, we are good partners, um, and we have the ability to do like that, so. Um, do you have any questions on, as, as we move through this, I'm going to have you put your hand up if you have questions and I'll do my best to get you all answered, so. Okay, let's see. I don't mean, I meant your digital hand, not your literal hand. Thank you. Um, I did see councillor Sims first and councillor Reimer second.
Uh, right, I guess my question is who polices this, the area out there on Twenty-seventh? Does, does our?
So, yeah, it, it's within the city's jurisdiction to address. Um, so i- it's, the only thing that's a little weird is that it crosses under C dot right away, um. Not that that impacts our ability to enforce, but it's just, that's a little different than Twenty-seventh Street. Uh, but all of those are within the corporate boundaries of Glenwood and so our police department has jurisdiction.
Okay, well, will they, our police department then, what, somebody will go park at the, uh, the bus transfer station and just walk down there periodically overnight?
Yeah, something like that. I mean, it, it's, um, these things are, you know, a, a lot of different ways they might be addressing that. They might periodically check in. They also sometimes get citizens' complaints, um, or alert them to the situation. And really, our, our goal always in these situations is, is really to, um, to kind of get compliance. We're not looking to, you know, make an arrest or really, you know, hassle anybody. It's worked really pretty well over at the other areas where we have that no camping. And primarily, our team just asks people to move out of the area and give them some direction where maybe they can, um, set up and spend the night.
The only other question I have is, we, I think I saw that this says the hours are ten to seven, that you're not allowed to camp there? Or in any of the camping?
I think that might be in the generalized, um, uh, that's, uh, I think you might, um, I, I don't have it pulled up in front of me. I don't believe that is applicable to this. It's no camping anytime in the zone. Our general camping is, uh, keeping in mind, there's some constitutional law around, uh, you know, having places to rest. Um, so we don't have a twenty-four hour ban on camping or resting anywhere throughout the jurisdiction.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Carl, that was gonna kind of be my question. I know that there's other, there are other municipalities in the valley that have banned camping. And, uh, you know, it, within, within, you know, city limits, y- you can't camp at any point, any time of day, anywhere. What, you know, wha- what is sort of the difference in, in the tack that they're taking versus the tack we're taking? Cause it seems that we're, you know, we're responding a lot to, you know, to, to hot areas, hot topics and being a little bit, you know, reactionary in, in some people's views versus being more perhaps proactive and, and being much, you know, more blanketed in, in our approach.
Yeah, I am. There was a Supreme Court case or a, uh, Circuit Court of Appeals case out of the Ninth Circuit that made it very clear that, um, you couldn't crim- criminalize just being homeless, um, and that you couldn't, you know, completely ban any area for somebody to sit down and rest, which is really, you know, what this is talking about. Uh, so when we originally did the snow camping area, it is a similar overlap to no smoking area we have in the code. Our approach was to try to narrowly tailor it to, um, what we were trying to achieve, which is in these areas where there are safety concerns, uh, where it's particularly impactful to people walking. Right, and for safety issues, we felt that was the most defensible approach to take. The US Supreme Court has subsequently overturned that decision. I don't see that, um, you know, and obviously you can't camp in parks, there's bans on things like that. Um, I think this is still an appropriately tailored approach to the situation. And, uh, other than these areas, frankly, I don't think that we see, uh, an enormous amount of problems inside the city of Glenwood Springs, right? Inside of our jurisdiction with these issues. Um, and I also quite frankly don't want to raise my hand and be the, the choice for the ACLU to, um, push on this.
Yeah, I, what I'm hearing you say is like trying to find that balance between.
It is, yeah, it, it's really about trying to find that balance. Um, obviously, we have on some, uh, both city-owned land and non-city-owned land outside of the corporate limits of Glenwood Springs. We do have a significant issues and risks with, um, homeless encampments. Um, but what I will tell you is it's not going to banning camping all the way through town is not going to resolve that issue. Um, so I think from an standpoint, RPD prefers this tailored approach.
Perfect.
Uh, and, and it's not so much about, you know, prohibiting people from sitting down and resting. I'm just looking at the, you know, I'm looking at, at what we're asking the mayor to, to amend here and, and paragraph C talks about being unlawful for any person to take up temporary or permanent residence or habitation to camp out or sleep at any time in the downtown area or the Twenty-seventh Street underpass. So, you know, I, I realize we're trying to strike a balance, but what's the difference really between downtown and every other neighborhood? You know, in, in, uh, in the community.
Uh, I think, I think two things. One is going back to that, trying to narrowly tailor it. Um, and you will see there's also, if you, if you look on, on down, there's, or upon any street alley, public parking lot, sidewalk, underpass, public park or any other public area, just pretty broad and, right? Uh, or in, you know, parked in your car, which, so I, I think in really calling out these specific areas, there are areas that have been problematic for us in the past. Um, and we're really trying to, to focus on and, and take care of those. Uh, and there again, I, you know, I, I think that we need to be, I guess, recognize there are risks in doing all of this. I think the, the jurisprudence around this particular issue is probably not done. Um, so I'm, I guess from a constitutional standpoint, I think this is a, an approach that works pretty effectively.
So, so, and this will be my last bit here, but so, so, you know, moving forward, if we just find another hotspot, do we include that hotspot on the list?
Yeah, I think we potentially would. I think that most of the areas that are laid out in this ordinance now, um, address most of, you know, this is, this is a new area of concern that hadn't been previously identified for us as a specific no camping area. Um, so yeah, we're kind of dealing with a hotspot. I, you know, if council is inclined to, to try a, uh, citywide camping ban, um, you know, that's, that's up to you guys. Um, you know, whatever you would like to do.
I'm, I'm frankly just more curious as to how, how we're, we've been thinking about this and, and how it applies to the situation at hand and how it might apply to future.
Yeah, I mean, I think that from my standpoint, I like the approach that we're trying to address particular problem areas more specifically. Recognizing that, you know, you can't sleep in the street, you can't, um, sleep in the parks and things like that. Um, I, I like this approach because it is more narrowly tailored to the, to address the situation. And also it's narrowly tailored to address what we view as a safety issue, not just an inconvenience issue, right? People don't like seeing or addressing the homeless. Oftentimes, these are areas where it becomes a real safety concern that we've identified.
Okay, thank you.
I think I, I thought I heard Sumner indicate that he wanted to talk, but now I'm not seeing his hand up. Okay, great. Um, I don't know which one of you popped your hand up first, cause I was listening. So is it, Aaron, do you want to go first and then Jonathan, are you cool with going second and going, I think last in this point? Okay.
Great. So I just want to bring up, um, two points. Uh, one, you know, from my experience, kind of having some of these like more sensitive areas, having this stated expressly does give law enforcement an opportunity to enforce as the community is asking them. So it's my understanding that that's the primary reason for this. It's just, it gives justification for any request to not be where they are. Um, and so I think that it's, it's valid that way to just kind of answer some of the concerns that we've been hearing from the community. But then, you know, in listening to Mitchell, I did wonder, you know, can you remind me, Carl, what is the issue like around like the bus stops and such? I know we've had that occurring. It's been several years now, but was that not because those are city property? They belong to like RAFDA? Was that the?
Uh, we were having a little bit of trouble with like, is it a trespass or not? And I think that was really more in regards to not, not only the bus stops, like sleeping in the bus stops, it was also, um, uh, doing any kind of, um, solicitation, um, for money or things like that. And that's, that's been pretty clear that it's, you know, that's a really difficult area unless they are, uh, you know, unless the person soliciting is, um, super aggressive, um, you know, that's viewed as a, you know, a constitutional right, a free speech right to do. And so that was one of the struggles we were having with the bus stops, I think, just in general. And we have in general, you know, in the downtown area, obviously we run into it a fair amount, same kind of an issue.
Right. So, you know, what would be the benefit, if any, to specifying, you know, kind of maybe taking a minute and just looking at some areas where we think that we could foresee? For instance, sorry, my dog. For instance, we did know that this was probably going to occur in this area of the underpass. I mean, it was a pretty safe assumption. And so that's, so ki- is there a way that we could, um, in anticipation of spring happening and all of that, you know, look forward and possibly include some of that specificity so that we give law enforcement the tools to do what the community expects them to be doing?
We can absolutely do that. I, I'm going to caution you that the tools we have to deal with these situations are pretty limited. Um, you know, I mean, it is, um, you know, for this kind of a charge, nobody's going to get lodged in jail. The jails, you know, not going to accept them. Um, setting them into municipal court has some limitations because there again, because we can't lodge and some of the limitations on, uh, how you handle failure to pay fines. There, there's, you know, just a limited set of tools that we have.
Got it.
Yeah.
Councillor Gottes.
So, can we, I mean, is one of those tools, can we just say move it along? Um, you know, and I'm, I'm thinking, you know, there's the gentleman whose new living room is our downtown in the orange jacket. Um, he has, he has totes, he secures them. Um, it's not a right, it, 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 to me doesn't feel like a right to rest situation since he like lives there, he lights candles, he smokes pot there, he, again, he secures his stuff and just leaves it there all the time like it's his personal space. Uh, I, I don't want to have him come back someday and have us just wipe it out and throw that stuff away. I don't think legally we can do that, but certainly we can post a notice on his personal effects saying that it's unlawful to store personal effects in this area and give him a date and then take it to a storage locker and or tell him, hey man, moving along, there's no camping here. And obviously, I get sent pictures of him camping, not just hanging out and sitting. Although most of the time I see him, he's just sitting, but certainly he's sleeping there as well.
Uh, and yeah, I can't, I mean, I've seen him sitting there, you know, hanging out, um, before, and I, I'll check in with the chief, um, on that, on kind of how that situation is evolving and, and get back to you guys if that's okay, cause I don't, I don't have the answer off the top of my head.
Yeah, I, I just heard kind of three distinctions. One is that I think that there's likely enough support to move this forward tonight. Um, two is that this isn't a consistent and present issue in this community. And so, you know, just as much as you can keep us updated on the legalities of what's appropriate and what kind of creates vulnerability for us as an organization, we would appreciate that. And third is let's look into councillor Gottes's concern because I agree with him. Um, you know, I, I recognize the transient nature of this community and I think that that transient piece is what's important. Important to acknowledge is that indicates movement from one location to a next, the next. And that's not happening here, so I do appreciate some energy on that, so, um, any additional questions? Okay, um, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I, yeah, do you need a public hearing?
Thank you.
Yeah, public hearing.
Um, okay, let's see. I'm going to open questions specific to this or comments specific, any, any public comment on this. I do see that we have one new participant with the number ending in three, three, zero. If you would like to talk about this specific item, please raise your hand. Okay, um, I'll bring it back to council then for a motion to approve or deny or continue. Whatever.
I'm going to approve.
Okay, I've got a motion from Matt to approve. Councillor Sims, and a second, anyone?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, councillor Gottes, a second. Okay.
Sorry, Aaron.
That's okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carl. We appreciate that. Um, okay, we will move on to, um, item number seven. This is resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty, establishing a development review fee schedule. Um, I think that Hannah Klausman, Development Director, are you going to be presenting on this?
That's me.
Yay.
Good evening, council. Good to see you virtually. Um, Hannah Klausman, Community Development Director. Hear a little bit of feedback there. Uh, this is in regards to resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty, um, looking at our development review fee schedule. This is something that council has the ability to review annually, um, to look at our fees. Um, I did a little bit of explanation of why this hasn't had any increases in recent years in your staff report, COVID being one of them, and also just a little bit of explanation that most jurisdictions don't raise fees every year. Um, it's really something that can be reviewed by council to see if our fees are keeping up, um, with current costs. Obviously, we've had some increases in our salaries here at the city, at City Hall. Thank you very much for that. That's greatly appreciated. Um, and so, uh, staff has taken the time to take a look at our fees for those reasons, as well as some other ones with our recent changes to the charter and our development thresholds. We needed to make some changes in what we're charging for, uh, by category as well. Um, so those are the new development permit thresholds that we're looking at with recently, uh, recently adopted. Um, so we've put together a fee schedule for you to review. Much of these are going to be across the board, um, a fifteen percent, roughly fifteen percent increase. There's been some rounding here and there, so between fourteen to fifteen percent. And then I will identify some of the, um, development fees that are above that or below that. Um, I identified some of those in the staff report. And then I'll pull up the fee and we can kind of go through. I've highlighted it for you so you can see some of the major changes, um, easily in this long list. These fees are everything that community development, um, charges for. So these are our, all of our fees for our land use applications. Um, this also includes fees for such things as parking fee in lieu. Um, and, um, we've got legal fees in there as well. Um, so if you have any questions on what these are about, I'm happy to answer that later. Most of you guys are probably familiar with this, but this is what people pay when they bring in a major development or, um, an accessory dwelling unit. Or even if you saw on there, a backyard chicken permit. So, um, we're proposing an amendment of this across the board. I did want to highlight some of the ones that are a little bit different. Mainly, these are coming from the engineering side that have to do with cost of construction. Um, so you'll see our parking fee in lieu. This is a fee. If you are unable to provide the amount of parking that is required, you can pay a fee, uh, per stall. That is something that you guys have to approve. So just FYI, there is a fee associated, but it would come to you for approval. Um, engineering gave estimates on the exact costs that we're, are coming in now on what a parking stall actually, um, costs to build and maintain. So that's a little bit higher of an increase, moving from eight thousand to ten thousand dollars per stall is what we're proposing. Um, and then, let's see here, sidewalks is also another one that has to deal with cost of construction. So if you have a development where, um, for one reason or another, the sidewalk is not actually going to be built with it, you can pay into the sidewalk fee and loop program, and so the city will use those funds to, uh, be utilized for other sidewalks or upkeep in other areas or for city plans in that area to actually build a sidewalk themselves. Again, this is going up quite a bit from what we've had before, um, with engineering bids coming off of Blake Avenue and Sixth Street. So we have very recent bids that were submitted. Um, so those are going up, um, a little bit more than the fifteen percent, as you can see. Uh, that's by linear foot, um, on the sidewalks. And I did want to point out, um, we are trying to keep the smaller residential projects at a lower cost. So you'll see on the smaller side with our development review thresholds that have changed, um, we've kept that at the fee, uh, the seven hundred dollar fee for those smaller units. Really trying to make sure we're not putting any barriers in the way, um, of those one to four unit, um, areas. Um, even though they do take up staff time, we feel that that's okay. It's not, those aren't the really big ones that take us a, a long time. And then, um, the ADU-specific parking fee in lieu is something that staff has discussed. Again, this is in the effort to make ADUs, um, you know, palatable to more people and more affordable. So with parking for an ADU, which is one space, they don't have the option to reduce their parking or request for a reduction. Cause you can't, you can't reduce the parking more than thirty percent. So reducing one space by thirty percent doesn't really work. So they don't have that option. So we thought we would, uh, propose to you guys for an ADU-specific parking fee in lieu to be half of what, um, the other, uh, parking fee in lieu is. So that'd be five thousand dollars, still remaining below what it would be today. I think I've covered most of the main issues. And I will share my screen so you can see. I'll just quickly go through that list. The, the last one, um, that I actually need to mention, uh, our legal fee that's at the bottom of our fee sheet is actually listed currently at two, two fifty an hour. Um, I've been told that that needs to be amended, um, to three fifty an hour for our legal fees. Um, we have a standard two-hour accommodation of legal fees for, that's built into every application. And we have our developers and our applicants sign something that states if you go over the two hours or you need quite a bit of legal help with your project, that would then be when we're charging for that three fifty an hour. It also helps us, um, so that our legal team doesn't become a quality control, um, for people who might not have that on their own team. Um, so I'll leave that with that and I will pull up the actual, uh, let's see here. Everyone's seen a spreadsheet with the yellow columns?
Yes.
Um, so as you can see, we've got a current fee, a proposed fee for twenty twenty-five. And then that last column is showing you about the increase. You can see most of those are sitting at the fifteen percent that I mentioned. I've highlighted the ones that are either new fees or have quite a bit difference. Um, you can see some of those parking fee and lose under our other miscellaneous fees towards the bottom of this page, um, going up beyond that. Uh, so a new one, I'll start at the top and go down, uh, minor PUD changes administrative. You can see that's happening right under PUD plan amendment, which is a more official application that has public hearings. What we've found, um, in the last couple of months is we are getting a lot more of these minor PUD changes, which is administrative. So it doesn't have a public fee associated, but it's a lot, a lot of research and time for staff to make these amendments. And so we wanted to make that, um, put that, propose that as a new fee to cover those costs that are coming in. And it's a quarter of the PUD application itself. You can see the PUD plan amendment that's a public hearing is half the application fee. So this is a quarter of the application fee that you can see above, which would be, um, two thousand six hundred forty-five is that fee that we would be, um, reducing that from. Moving down, you can see we deleted administrative, which previously was four to eight units, which was administratively approved. As you're aware, that's no longer something that's administratively approved. Anything five and up goes to city council and has two public hearings. So we're trying to accommodate the fact that those applications now take quite a bit more staff time, more public hearing, more legal involvement. Um, and wanting to accommodate for that in what we charge, but keeping the minor, um, five to nine residential units at that previous seven hundred dollar charge to keep that low and making a threshold where we break to go higher at ten. Um, I added a note there, ten is where our inclusionary zoning regulations kick in. So that's kind of a threshold that we have that's, you're getting into a larger project. Um, so that's what we're proposing, a break in the minor, um, so seven hundred and then that going up to thirteen hundred, roughly. And then you can see in the larger, um, the major, um, that's just going up fifteen percent, um, as well as the amendment is staying the same. Um, we did increase final plans, um, significantly more than the fifteen percent. That is also an area that we're seeing take quite a bit of staff time and a lot of iterations and legal involvement. Um, so upping that accordingly. Moving down, floodplain development permits. We have quite a few permits that are fairly inexpensive in the fifty dollar, thirty-five dollar range. Um, they end up taking quite a bit of time, so we did want to kind of move those up. They're still inexpensive. A hundred dollars is, is hardly, um, cost prohibitive for this type of application, um, but we did move that up a little bit further. And then, um, as I mentioned, getting down into the flexibility and relief procedures, most of those are in the fifteen percent. We did add a new fee here, which is that parking alternative request. As you guys know, parking has become an even more and more contentious topic. And so this is taking up quite a bit of time as well. It didn't have a fee and it's very comparative to, um, say, applying for a variance or an administrative adjustment or alternative compliance, which is just the line above. So we added a parking alternative request. So when someone wants to reduce their parking, they're looking for a benefit. Um, we put that fee at two hundred and fifty-five dollars to kind of match some of those other administrative requests. Uh, moving down, you can see the parking in Luffy that I discussed, moving from eight thousand dollars per stall to ten thousand dollars. And a little asterisk there for the ADU, that it would be half of the regular fee in lieu to be able to do that, to pay for, um, the parking fee in lieu. And on the back page, um, you see our chicken permit, uh, that's going from thirty-five dollars to fifty dollars. Still not too bad. Um, it does require quite a bit of review for an interesting set of chicken coop plans, so we raised that a little bit there. And then finally, under the sidewalk fee in lieu, you can see the changes that I discussed. Um, we've got two different fees there for commercial and mixed-use districts and residential. And you can see the commercial going up thirty-five percent, the residential going up fifty percent um, to ninety-six dollars a linear foot, lineal foot and sixty dollars lineal foot, and that is coming from engineering. And our home occupation permit, similar to some of those other small permits, it still take up a significant amount of time raising. small permits, it still take up a significant amount of time raising that to $50 as well, which is about a 40% increase. So that is, that's the proposal and I will open it up for any questions.
Councilor Zelinski, then Councilor Wymer.
Thank you. So I appreciate trying to encourage ADUs. I'm a little bit torn with cutting that fee only because that's impacting our neighborhoods. And I'm afraid we may end up with like more contentious development and pitting neighbor against neighbor with kind of that, you know, kind of reducing the price there. So I just, I think that I'm just wondering if you have heard in kind of any of the feedback, if that's a valid concern, or do you think that for the most part, it's, it would be to handle?
Um, it's an interesting question. I don't believe we've had anyone on the ADU side go for the parking fee in lieu. The feedback that we are getting is to build an ADU is quite expensive. And I think that's probably why we're not seeing. Obviously, building a parking spot is expensive, but what we're seeing is most places that have to build a parking spot or go the fee and Lou route, just don't build the ADU.
Got it.
And also remember on any of the parking fee in lieu, it would come to you as an application and request. And so you're going to be able to review every situation to determine if it's appropriate or not. So this would just be reducing the fee if you did approve it.
Got it. Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll do Council Wymer and then Council Schacter.
Thank you. This looks like it's well thought out. I appreciate the work that went into this. I do have a couple of questions. For, for sort of our, our smaller infill projects, so fewer than five units. What are our fees associated with, with that?
So fewer than five, you could see currently administrative, it used to be an administrative decision.
It's the four, four hundred to four sixty.
Still administrative and that's $700 for that. And we are not proposing to increase that based on the changes that we also made when those charter amendments went through. We removed one to four units from having to do a more specific review that we have for the larger projects called administrative site and architectural. So we made it a little bit easier closer to that building permit review. And so we don't feel that we need to raise that at the time. Staff is comfortable with that remaining at $700.
Oh, so if I want to build a duplex, it's 700? Is that, is that right?
Yes.
And if I want to build nine units, it's 700?
Well, in our current fees, but what we're proposing, yes, the five to nine residential units would still remain at 700.
How, how often do you get requests for parking fee in lieu?
Let me think about that for a second.
It doesn't need to be specific, just
Yeah.
Often, not often, hardly ever?
Not often, I would say. Usually that's occurring at the larger project. They also know that asking for a parking fee in Luke is a council decision. So there's some risk there to the developer. There's not certainty. So I think most people try and shy away from that and be more towards a parking reduction, which is an administrative decision. So it's not frequent that we see that, but we do have ADUs as it's a a small addition, usually those, those exterior detached ADUs coming in. People want to do those. And when they look at what they have to do of either providing a parking space or paying for the parking space, we, we are experiencing people that are like, well, that's not something that we can actually do. And, you know, for cost purposes, you know, those are a lot, those are a lot of projects where it's a, it's a DIY, it's mom and pop. These aren't big developers with larger project pockets or financing available. So it's a little bit cost prohibitive for them. So we don't see a whole lot of the parking fee in lieu come in.
And then help me understand what's the difference between parking fee in lieu and the parking alternative request?
Yeah. So the parking alternative request is when someone's coming in to reduce their parking. That's in our code. Someone can request to reduce up to 30% of their parking requirements. Let's just say a residential apartment complex comes in, they're required to have a hundred spaces. They can reduce that by 30 spaces administratively. Let's be clear. There's a lot of thought and analysis that goes into that. And so I am rarely handing out approvals for 30% parking reductions, as you can imagine. The only, like, it's a circumstance case by case. One of the examples is senior housing where the planners and the traffic engineers get together and look at what that use is. And we can make reasonable arguments that senior housing projects based on traffic counts do not need as much parking. And we're more comfortable making that reduction. So that's a reduction request that's administratively approved. The parking fee in lieu is something that comes to you guys for approval.
My, my final question here would be around incentives for, you know, does, does this approach here, does, does, does this spreadsheet, you know, this plan, does it include or consider, you know, financial incentives within the fee structure to, you know, to incentivize and drive some of the projects that, that we value or that we are strategically trying to go for?
Uh, it does. So that was the smaller unit that, that is looking at infill. Obviously our comprehensive plan talks a lot about.
Even things like affordability, Hannah, does that, does that get factored in, into here at all? Like if, you know, beyond, you know, beyond the required, you know, once you hit 10 units, you know, sort of factor, but you know, if I were to build, you know, a, a, a market rate duplex versus an affordable duplex, you know, whatever that might mean. But, you know, is there, is there anything that, that is sort of seen differently through the, through the lens of the fee structures?
Uh, we don't have that so much on our development review fees. Uh, as a reminder, most affordable projects that are coming in, even the small ones, come before council to request fee waivers on our system improvement fees. That's usually where that incentive for affordable housing comes from. So that's the water, that's the sewer, sometimes our building permit fees as well. Parkland and things of that nature. City council has at its discretion the ability to waive those. And I suppose I'd look to Carl for confirmation. But I do believe you guys have the authority to waive any fee if requested.
Yeah, I, I would say the other thing, Council Wymer, we have a, a mechanism to reduce those system improvement fees for ADUs if you agree to indeed restrict them as well. So not only is there the opportunity to ask for waivers on these larger projects, there's a built into the code reduction in the system improvement fees if you are willing to restrict your unit for a period of time. As far as affordability goes.
Those were all my questions. I do have some comments, but I'll hold them for, for just here and for, for another second. Thank you, Hannah. Okay.
I think Council Schacter.
Anna, as a question, it's, it's kind of a hypothetical, but would, would our current, the, the stormwater requirements that are now facing the city and developers, even tiny ones? Would that be potentially an incentive for a small, an ADU project to take the fee waiver as opposed to various implications that stormwater issues might create?
Um, that's an interesting one and not one that we're currently proposing to change?
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm just dealing with what Aaron said. It seems to me, I'm asking you, might that be, and I'm not, I'm not against the fee structure, but might that be an incentive for an ADU person to say, yeah, I'll take the fee in lieu for parking because if I start creating parking places and meeting stormwater requirements, my expenses might be much higher.
Certainly. And yeah, I get what you're saying now and thank you for that. The stormwater is a new one and the engineers implement that one. So I'm, I'm actually less knowledgeable in that area. But yes, you know, there, there are triggers for the stormwater with pervious coverage of the lot. We're putting in a parking space may mean you have to do some other mitigation for the stormwater. Engineering, I will say, is, is really good at telling people, this is your best route. This is going to be the most affordable. This is what our fee is. So might want, that might be a better question for Ryan Gordon. I'm sorry, that one's my, drainage engineering is a little fuzzy.
That's fine. Thank you. We ready for a motion?
I'm just double checking. We don't have any other questions.
Don't we need to open it up to public comment?
Yeah, but first I'm just double checking. We don't have any other public, any council questions. And if we're sat there, then I'm going to open up to public comment. Is anyone here this evening like to take three minutes to ask questions about this fee schedule? Or make any comments or concerns about it public?
What is it there?
I'm sorry, what was that? Council Schacter?
Other than Merle, nobody's there.
Oh, yeah. They could pop on and raise their hand. This is, this is online. Things happen fast. So I'm going to close that and we'll bring it back to council for a motion. Councilor Gottes, your hand is up.
Yeah. And, and I'm, I'm happy to make a motion, but I, I have, I think I had a question, but it, as I was thinking about it, it turned in more of a comment with a little bit of a question. So let me, let me say my comment first, but then Hannah, if you could, I, I do have a sincere question as well. It, it appears to me that, and I, I may know, I, I, I'd love to hear more from the rest of council. Maybe at a separate work session about this. I've, I think I've talked about this before, but ADUs used to be incentivized heavily by our development department because they were what was called affordable by nature. And, and these were typically what would I have a basement ADU? It's an attic space converted, a single car, maybe a double car garage, you know, that, that's kind of what the idea of ADUs were 20 years ago, 25 years ago. When we, you know, we were really at the forefront of ADUs and, and that high density infill and being able to have residents like myself be able to afford a mortgage because we can generate some revenue. But that affordable by nature, you know, when I moved here, I rented mine out for $700. And now it's, it's almost three times that amount. And, and I get credit all the time for being like super cheap and affordable. We took action to raise the square footage of an ADU from 900 to 1,000 square foot. And I know somebody right now who's in the development process, who's doing a two bedroom, two bath, 1,000 square foot home and a thousand square feet. That's, that's a modest home. You know, it's not big. It's not a tiny home, but it's, it's a modest home. And so I, I guess I'm wondering something like that detached would probably run out for $3,500 a month in Glenwood Springs. Especially if you have a yard or anything else attached to it. And so I think we're beyond the affordable by nature aspect, especially again, since we, we raised the, the limit of how large it can be. So if it's not affordable by nature, I guess my question is, and here's the question, and it's a sincere question, Hannah. Why are we, has it outlived the idea that if it's not affordable by nature, that we need to incentivize them so heavily? And why are we doing this? When, when somebody can make $40,000 a year and, and I know they're expensive to do, but, but they're, they're not affordable housing.
Um, yeah, there's some great comments there, Councilor Gottes. I appreciate that question. We did make a lot of those changes that to, in the effort to make ADUs to encourage them. And I anecdotally understand that some are renting out fairly high. And you're right, a two bedroom, two bath ADU at a thousand square feet might not feel like the kind of quaint accessory dwelling unit in the backyard that most of us were thinking of. As far as like how we discount them on the system improvement fee side, our fees are set up to give you a benefit, whether it's an ADU or a single family home or a multi-family apartment, the smaller you go, the less those fees are. And so that kind of tracks, like, we might want to look at ADUs that are above a certain amount, making it that same way as opposed to just a straight quarter. And perhaps it's a, a bedroom consideration. I, I think there's some merit behind what you're saying that the ADU landscape has changed. And perhaps we should take a closer look at how we calculate their fees. That's the biggest reduction that ADUs get is in the system improvement fee category. Here, the one that we're talking about tonight is giving them a break on the parking fee in lieu, which at half, you know, considerably that is quite the incentive. If they're going that route, we just don't see that many come in. So if that is something that council would like staff to take a look at in the face of these changes that we have made, I think that that is a perfectly legitimate ask.
Well, and so, you know, I, I think.
Question?
I'm sorry?
To be at questions, Sumner. We've already done all our questions. This is comments.
Oh.
Yep. Councilor Gottes.
If, um, yeah. And so, you know, and thanks for that, Hannah. I think I would love to have, if there's other supportive council, a, a work session or just maybe a recommendation from our planning and zoning board or staff of, of if they've outlived that. I, I think, you know, as far as parking requirements, you know, Erin, I loved your comment slash question about the earlier about, you know, what that does to neighborhoods. But I also don't want, you know, a, a parking requirement as slow as these things are coming along. I don't see whole neighborhoods getting turned into it tomorrow. And, and maybe I'm thinking of our neighborhood, which, which has ample on-street parking. And so I take that with a grain of salt. I, I just like having the opportunity for high density. If a goal is high density infill, so much of that is killed by a mandatory parking requirement. So I'm supportive of a fee in lieu of, of some kind. I just question, since these are, these are moneymakers that are essentially duplex level light, I would say, you know, if there's no affordability that's tied to an ADU, you know, if we cannot require a hundred percent AMI or anything like that. I just, I'm not incent, inclined to include the ADU portion of this. And so I, I guess with that, I'll just simply make a motion to pass, let's see, resolution 2024 dash 40. As presented with the exception of any ADUs in order to have that conversation later.
Okay, perfect. I see a motion to, I see a motion. Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. I'll look for another motion. Anybody else want to move something forward? Council Schacter?
Sure. I'll, I'll move regarding resolution 2024 dash 40 that we approved the resolution as presented by staff.
And a second.
A second.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Um, any, any additional discussion?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Council Schacter.
Well, I, I, I appreciate what John is saying, but I think right now, I think there'll be a longer ongoing discussion about all foreign under units and, and the administrative view to make things maybe even less expensive. But I think this is not just about affordable housing. ADUs are part of our goal for infill and increasing housing inventory. And some of them may seem less affordable and some of them more affordable. We haven't had many of them and I don't see a monster demand. But I think it fits in our overall housing strategy to encourage infill of four or less units. So I would support the motion and the effort that's being made by development right now. Thank you.
Councilor Wymer.
Yeah, I think, I think my comment is, is somewhat in line with, with Councilor Gottes's that, that I, I do see maybe some potential for a work session here coming up. I, I don't, I, I really don't know if I agree with, with John or, or I'm 180 degrees different from, from him. But I, I really, I, I want to see, or, or I'm interested to know if, if council is interested in spending some time to think about how are we, how are we? how are we incentivizing the behaviors and the products that we want to see materialize in the market through this fee, through the system improvement fees, through the administrative processes, through um how we pri- even prioritize, you know, applications. Um, you know, for, for me, something like, like an ADU, um, you know, should should be one of our highest priorities as, as far as facilitating, uh, you know, you know, the, the, the materialization in the market. Um, super interesting that we might need to now define, you know, ADUs, small versus, you know, large, you know, or maybe have some sort of, you know, five hundred square feet, this side or that side, and, and kind of like two different texts. But, but, you know, something like an ADU or somebody wanting to come and turn their single family into a duplex, or, or something that that really fits with our strategy, with, with, you know, maintaining look and feel of neighborhoods with, you know, the recommendations that come from our, from, from our, from our housing uh, uh, committee. Um, you know, really thinking about how, how we incentivize those sorts of things with, with a- again, more than fees, but with just how we handle administratively. And then how do we disincentivize the things that we may not necessarily want to see, or, or that we, that we value so importantly that we don't want to get rid of. So, you know, I, I asked about the parking spaces, right? Ten, you know, ten thousand for, for a fee in lieu. And we know that, you know, especially in, in, in some parts of town, parking is a super premium. And so, you know, would it make sense to double or triple that ten thousand dollars, right? And, and, and what does that do to the mindset of the developer to the, you know, how does that impact the neighborhood? What, you know, what would staff's, you know, sort of thought and reaction be to, to something like that? And so, so I, I'm, I, I support, you know, uh, uh Hannah's uh proposal tonight and, and we'll, we'll support it. But I, I really would like to know if, if council would see maybe an opportunity for us to, as I say, really sort of think through, or maybe staff can go off and, and come up with a, you know, a, 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 a recommendation. How are we incentivizing what we want and disincent, disincentivizing what we don't want? Um, vis a vis fees and administrative processing.
Thank you, Councillor Weimer. Councillor Zalinski?
Yeah, everything that uh councillor Weimer just said. And I also, you know, just, I didn't give a second to uh councillor Godis's proposal purely because I like that we get an opportunity to review. That to me is um reassuring. You know, that allows us to look at where that makes sense. I'm thinking again of my neighborhood. In my neighborhood, you're, there's not a lot of lots that are going to be able to put a full structure in. It will be a true ADU and it will require a parking place. And so, you know, I, I like, I like that review process. I think that having sort of an over uh overview analysis um kind of more of like, how do we incentivize what we want, I think is really, really relevant because we're recognizing we're not getting that with like this organic nature that we've kind of adopted in the past. Um, so I do think that moving forward with a little bit more kind of purpose is, would be helpful. Um, but I think right now where this stands, the work that's done, I think is helpful, and I don't see any reason to pick it apart from here.
Um, I'm going to jump in just so that I'm not the last. Um, and just say that, you know, to councillor Godis's point, councillor Weimer's points, I think, you know, pretty consistent, but I will just say that I don't love the concept of a fee in lieu. I think that the reality is, is that most people at some point in the history of that home who live there will be car dependent. And they'll need that parking place. We don't live in a valley. We have a lit, we do live in a valley that has a rural transit organization, but the majority of people at some point in the, in a home or a structure, and certainly a rental, are going to need a place to park. And when we have, we, when we remove the necessity of that or incentivize it by, you know, adding a fee in lieu option to say, oh, just don't put it in there maximize, and, and they're prioritizing the wrong values. And I think it's really important for community to not have conflicts and, and we can create barriers to conflict by just absolutely requiring that you provide parking to your, to, you know, it's the space that people can, you know, they can park in so that they're not parking in some weird configuration in their neighbor's yard or adjacent to it, or, you know, sometimes conflict occurs more often in these neighborhoods when there's bad parking and there's not good parking opportunities. And, and I think that that's the onus is on us to not have the code allow that type of behavior. So I, I would just, one, I would love to look at parking requirements and make sure that they are reasonable for where we are in this day and age. And if we need to bump the one point fives to the one point seven five or even up to two, I would like to look at that and really understand that we are making good decisions. But I recognize tonight, we're talking about fee schedules. And I'm comfortable where we are with that to be able to support this. So, um, councillor Sims, then it's councillor Godis after.
But I would like to say that I can support the amendment or the ordinance as it stands tonight, but I agree with Mitchell and councillor uh Weimer and Godis that we should have a work session to review some of these other things, definitely uh soon, sooner rather than later. That's my point.
Excellent. Thank you, councillor Sims. Um, councillor Godis.
You're gonna love, uh, Mayor Wusu, I love your points uh about, you know, the fee in lieu of and parking, y- you know, and, and uh councillor Zalinski, I think, like, it's so interesting because three years ago, you probably had four drivers and four cars in your house alone. And, you know, another ADU situation might just be a single person with an ADU with a single driver. You know, it could have literally half the number of cars. And I would say our neighborhood Park West specifically is probably one of those places you could do a fee in lieu of, because we have so much ample on-street parking where it might be more difficult. And, and so it, it really is, I, I, I think Mayor Wusu, to your point, it is, you know, I kind of come around going like, you know, it might be a case-by-case basis and, and it, it might change. I don't know how we would even do it, Hannah. Um, but like, it's, it's, it's dependent on a family, on a family's place and time, of, of who they have for drivers, you know, all those impacts that we could see in the worst-case scenario um could be playing out in different ways. So I think, yeah, to cut to the chase, um, I, I think it sounds like there's interest in a work session where we talk about things like this, um, where we talk about just the philosophical fee in lieu of, as Mayor Wusu suggested. Um, and probably give ourselves as much flex, ourselves, staff, as much flexibility to make good recommendations in, in a planning process. And also it's fun to say, you know, I appreciate your consistency, uh councillor Shatner of never in almost two years, no matter how minor an amendment or, or a small tweak, that you absolutely.
That's something you guys can work out later on, right?
Name on top of it.
No, 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 no. No, both of you, knock it off. We're moving on. Um, so we have a motion, we have a second, we've had some discussion. I'll go ahead and call the question.
How do we do it? Raise our hand or?
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so Ryan, did you catch that? I'm, I'm a, a supporter as well.
All right, next.
Hold on one second. I'm actually going to have Ryan read that out um to the public record.
Yeah.
But I don't know if, if Ryan, you want? Okay. Oh, Ryan, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Better.
Better, but barely.
Sorry, I think this is about as good as I'm going to get.
That's good. We can hear you there.
All right, yes, Mayor Wusu, no councillor Godis, yes councillor Zalinski, yes councillor Weimer, yes councillor Sims, yes councillor Shaktar, it passes five-one.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, great.
I also put that on the work session.
Excellent. Thank you for that. We really appreciate it. Okay. Um, let's go ahead and we will move on to item number eight. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight and ordinance of the city council, the city of Glenwood Springs. This is for appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. This is a first reading. So we will have Steve Boyd presented to us. We'll open it up for questions. We will have public comment, and then we will bring it back to council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, our charter requires that staff present or submit a budget to you in October. You vote to adopt that budget in November, which means we agree on what the budget is. And then in December, you vote to appropriate the funds within that budget, uh, which gives staff the authority to go ahead and, and spend those um, as we go through the year. So that's what this is. And it's a, it's a one reading ordinance.
Oh, it's a one reading? Okay, great. That's what it meant by one reading and not first reading. But that's cool. One first. There is a distinction. Okay, awesome. Um, any questions from council? Councillor Weimer?
Question, Madam Mayor. I was just ready to make a motion.
Okay, um.
Uh, public hearing.
Yep, so that's, we're not going to take your motion. So anybody have questions about this? Okay, no questions. I will open it up to public comment. Anybody here this evening that would like to comment, questions, concerns about this agenda? Okay, I'm going to close that, bring it back to council. Councillor Weimer, would you like to make a motion?
Love to, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. I'm, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight, the appropriation of the twenty twenty-five budget as presented.
Excellent. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by councillor Weimer, a second by councillor Zalinski. All those in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Steve, thank you again for all the work that went into that.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Yvette, the whole finance department. We appreciate you all. Uh, item number nine, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty, fourth quarter budget amendment. Once again, the word one, not first, so we just have to read this one time. Yeah, okay. Steve Boyd.
One time, correct, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Um, each year throughout the year, we do about four or five uh budget amendments to reflect things that council directs us to do during the year that worked in the budget previously. Um, at the end of the year, we do a final budget appropriation uh amendment. The purpose of that is to make sure that in each of our funds and in each of our de- general fund departments, uh, we don't overspend the budget that you guys have approved. And then we make changes to revenues generally to make our year and a little bit closer, um, you know, the revised budget a little bit closer, just for purposes of financial reporting. So that's what this is.
Okay, excellent. Um, any questions from council? Okay, um, anyone? Yep, councillor Weimer.
Just a quick question. Um, I didn't do the math, uh, Steve. With the, the sum of the increases and the decreases for fourth quarter, is there a, a net at the bottom here?
Um, I don't know if I have that up. Um, no, but if you would like, I'm happy to do that and uh just circulate it around.
The sense for what? Do you have a sense?
Yeah, we, uh, there were more decreases than increases in a lot of cases. Uh, you know, we just overestimated something, or we couldn't get to it, so we decreased it. There's not anything significant that, that you guys don't know about that went up.
Okay, thanks.
Um, open it to public comment. Did we already do that? I think we got to do that one again too. So moving on, anybody from the public would like to visit about this? Okay, I'm going to pu- um, close public comment, bring it back to council. Motion? Anyone?
Sure.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, regarding ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty, the fourth quarter budget amendment, uh, I move that we approve as presented.
Excellent. Great. That was by, so the motion by Shaktar, the second by Weimer?
Yes.
We did that? Okay, great. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we have, um, Ryan, go ahead and read that. That, uh, that vote tally, please.
Yes, Mayor Wusu. Uh, yes, councillor Zalinski, yes councillor Sims, yes councillor Wu, or yes, Mayor Wusu, yes councillor Shaktar, no councillor Godis, yes councillor Weimer, it passes five-one. And I will start putting only instead of one.
Okay, perfect. Okay, awesome. Um, well, let's move on then. Um, this is, and we'll move on to council comments, item number two. I did see councillor Weimer lift his hand. Is that for council comments?
I, I was just curious. I don't know if it's appropriate, Madam Mayor, to ask, but I was curious if, why councillor Godis didn't approve that last motion?
If he'd like to share, he's more than welcome to.
Right, right.
If you guys want to visit about it later, welcome to us.
Yeah, if you'd like to give me a call, I, I, I can share my reasoning later. I don't know that I want to take up council time with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Um, councillor Warner, did you have any other comments for this evening? Okay, councillor Shatner.
Um, two quick comments. One is, um, one is just for praise of what the, um, our community center is doing over the holiday and such a wide variety of incredible activities involving more than just physical fitness, by all means. It's truly a great community center. They're doing a great job and commend them and the staff. And, um, I think, uh, oh, the other comment I'd say in praise to uh Hannah's department and uh we now have a new housing website. It's available to the public. It's up and running. I'm sure it'll be refined, but it's something we've needed, um, that, um, Kevin has been working on and it's up there and it starts focusing on um, some of the um applications for um subsidized rental housing and various, uh, various other programs. It's worth a look. And there's a link. And so that's all I have right now.
Perfect. Okay, I think that is such well-deserved accolades. The community center, I've had the opportunity to be there for the last few weekends in a row, both for the craft fair, which I thought was both well-organized and thoughtfully curated. It was a really wonderful event. Um, and I appreciate everyone who, who was involved in the organization. And then also the, the city Christmas party last weekend, I thought was well-organized, well-attended. Um, and really a lot of fun. So I think everyone, I, I echo councillor Shaktar's comments. Um, anyone else from council like to make comments this evening? Um, since this is our last board meeting or council meeting, um, before the end of the year, I just want to in the year by just thanking all of the boards and commission members, all the people who from the community who continue to show up, um, and help support us. They dig into these, you know, very cumbersome and difficult and interesting and historical and river items and planning and zoning items, all these different boards and commissions we have that support our elected city council and making good decisions that reflect the community at large. And I just want to acknowledge them and um, wish them well during the holidays, just as a thank you. I know oftentimes they watch our council meetings. And then I also want to thank all the staff, um, at City Hall, just a huge thanks. This, this community, I am honored to be a part of the organization. I, when I see the trucks drive by, I am, I am, um,
Way.
Yeah, it's fun to know, like to understand just how hard they all work and how knowledgeable they are about how we keep this community running. Um, like literally from the lights that are on in my room to the, the street out in front of us. Um, the trash seat gets picked up, the, the, the community center that I can go, you know, go play at. And even when I flush toilet, I should be like in, in total gratitude of all the things that get done, including that truck that drives by, that someone is willing to drive it and has a job doing it. But also that there's a fleet team taking care of it. There's, it is such a complex organization, which is a good segue to just tell Steve Boyd, thank you. Steve, thank you so much, um, in your first full year with the city. You have done great work. You've built a strong team. At that Christmas party, it was evident how how many happy people are working in. There is a camaraderie at the city and I, I just, you are steering the ship in the right direction and you are a great captain of the team. So thank you. Um, Carl Hanlon, thank you. All of our department heads, thank you so much. And last and certainly not least, regardless of sometimes I bicker with you, our city council, thank you all so much. Um, it's an honor to serve with you guys as well. And I appreciate your commitment to the community. We are um a very diverse group with lots of different opinions and I enjoy the banter and the brainstorming and the solutions. The banter and the brainstorming and the solutions based approach that we all. Take in order to make what we, we hope are good decisions for the community. So thank you all. Um, any additional comments since I just finished? If not, I'll move on to city manager report.
Thank you. Um, a couple of quick things. We went live, I think today on our housing page on our website. I'm gonna send out a link to you guys. Um, as soon as we're done here. And then we'll put it on a, a work session or kind of showcase it in January a little bit, but it looks pretty good. And then lastly, I too wanted to express my appreciation and I know that I speak for staff in saying thank you to everybody. We really appreciate all of your support. I'm happy to be part of this team and I'm happy to have this council in place. So thank you, everybody. I feel really good about where we're going next year.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, um, Carl Hanlon.
Uh, you know, as your attorney, hopefully you won't talk to me until after the new year. Life is to not talk to their attorney. Uh, anyway, uh, have a good, you know, whatever holidays you're celebrating, have a good one. Um, Happy New Year and we'll talk to you on the other side.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Carl, as well. I said to Steve, you know, thank you, but it's been a complex year with you. Um, meaning that we, we throw a lot at you. And the community, in particular, a handful of community members throws a lot at you. And we continually try to stay in our integrity. And continue to work hard for the community so that we don't get bogged down by the small things and rather keep the community strong. So thank you for your legal advice. We appreciate you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yep. Thank you all so much. I will look for.
Do we have?
Oh wait, hold on one second. Under correspondence, incoming, upcoming, we, I always forget it because we, we have it like every sixth meeting, we have something. We do have a letter. Have you all had a chance to look at that letter? Thank you, Seth. That was Sumner nodding approval. How about everybody?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, Sumner.
Do we have to take some, do we have to take some action? I mean, I support it. I'm just wondering, do we have to do anything formally to?
Yeah, why don't we do it formally? If you'd like to make a motion, that would be great.
I would move that we authorize Steve to send out the letter to AVLT as drafted.
And a second. I'll second it.
I was, I'm trying to second, but I was muted. I'll second it.
Counselor Zalinski, so we have a motion by Counselor Shacter to approve a letter of support. And a second by Counselor Zalinski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just, I, I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot, uh, but I wanted to pass along the appreciation from CMC. Uh, that, uh, you guys helped kind of step in and get them where they needed to be. They were very, very appreciative of that. So I'm sorry that I forgot to say that.
That's okay. I think that somehow Jonathan's on a loop and we keep getting nays from him. But that could be, I don't know, we'll ask tech about that later. Um. Okay, um, Ryan, did you catch all that? I'll do it. I heard, uh, um, yes from Counselor, let's see, Counselor Wymer. A yes from Counselor Shacter, a yes from Counselor Sims, a yes from Counselor Zalinski, a yes from Counselor Wussow, and a nay from Counselor Godis. The motion passes five to one.
Can I make a little announcement?
Yes, please do.
The information, the core information for the new camp candidate for the municipal election is up on the website, the clerk website. Um, if you guys want to check it out or if anybody wants to check it out, who's interested in, uh, running. Um, the notice of intent, um, which you have to sign before you can fill out a petition and have people fill out a petition. Um, we'll be going live, um, on our website on December thirty first. Um, and you can also pick one up, uh, from me on December thirty first. All right, thanks.
Wow.
Hey, um, I think at this point I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
We'll let Counselor Shacter do it at that time. So Counselor Shacter made the motion, Counselor Zalinski made the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
You stay here, okay, we're going.
It's a loop, it's a loop. No, okay, um. Motion passes five to one. We still get to adjourn. Thank you all so much. Um, be well.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
And Hanukkah.
Everything.
We're good. Thank you, man. Appreciate it. Do I need to, uh, stop the recording or anything?
Sorry, Ryan, what was that?
Just asking if I need to, uh, stop the recording or anything.
Oh, no, you could just end the meeting, but we're good.
Hey, I'll just, uh, X out.
Yep, right on. Happy holidays.
You too, thanks.